Praise the Lord, your brothers and sisters. We thank God for His grace and in His sovereign desire that we should be prepared for His coming. He has provided a means in the form of this meeting wherein we can analyze our life, set it right and prepare for the Lord's coming. We welcome you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, whether you are watching on Zoom or on Hebron Goa YouTube channel. We welcome you all in the name of the Lord and we welcome our brother Satyraj, who from all the way from Bangalore, he will share God's Word to us. So before we start in prayer, let me remind you, though we may be in our individual homes, in our own comfort zone, but remember that we are in the presence of Almighty God. So do not move from the place where you are, we are at the Lord's feet. We may not be able to gather as a church in the church building, but surely the Lord has not forbidden us to gather at His feet. And the Lord promised, whoever comes to me, in no way will I cast him out. John 6:37. So keeping this thinking in our mind, let us commit this meeting into the Lord's hands and let it be a heart's desire that the Lord will at least speak to us on this last day of this meeting. Let us pray. Come on, Anil, and let us pray. Let us look to the Lord. Most gracious, loving Heavenly Father, we humbly come before the throne of Thy grace. We acknowledge our unworthiness, O Lord, we acknowledge our fallen nature. We acknowledge that our life is not up to the standard that we want us to be. But we thank you, Lord, for each concern that we should be prepared for our coming. And because of this, we have arranged this meeting for us. Here we come to hear fallen people, people greatly in need of Thy word that will encourage us, that will inspire us and that will enlighten us in grim past. O Lord, we commit Thy servant, brother Satyraj, into your loving care. A fresh anction of Thy Spirit be given. O Lord, that Thy word may freely flow from the throne of Thy grace, touching and transforming the lives of your children who are affected at Thy feet, O Lord. O Lord, who am I to stand here and to live in singing and time of proflamation? I acknowledge my nothingness, unworthiness. Give me your grace, O Lord, behind thy cross. And utterance may be given to this unworthy servant like me. O Lord, and we also bring all the equipments that are used for this transmission and reception. We bring them under the sprinkling of your precious blood. And we pray, Lord, that none of your children, wherever they may be affected, whether in Goa, out of Goa, even any part of the world, they may retrieve a clear reception. They may be able to hear Thy still small voice, O Lord. O Lord, this evening, we commit everything ourselves. This equipment is placed into your loving hand. And we bind all the forces of darkness, whether sane and unfaithful, and we give you all the glory, the honor and the praise. In the precious name of your dear son and our loving Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. We'll sing a song in English, "Eviko Israe". It's a very familiar, common song. And that's the need of the hour, that we need to be evocating out of our sleep to prepare ourselves for the Lord's coming.[307.27][309.27]"Eviko Israe". "Eviko Israe, put off thy slumber, and the truth shall set you free. For out of thine eyes comes thy deliverer in the year of jubilee. O hallelujah, o hallelujah, hallelujah, oh praise the Lord! O hallelujah, o hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord! For in the furnace of much affliction I have chosen Thee the whole. And so for I am, I'll give you favor, and for wrath I'll give you sorrow. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah, hallelujah, oh praise the Lord! O hallelujah, o hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord! Thou art my children, for I have sought thee. Thou art river upon my head, and I will gather all those that gather; they shall come back to their rest. O hallelujah, o hallelujah, hallelujah, oh praise the Lord! O hallelujah, o hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord!" We'll sing one more song. In our Bethel song group, it's song number 18. Soon rapture will be over. It's true, where it's told, our Lord will come to take us, that we may be with Him, rahid, and this is called the rapture. So let us sing this song with our voices, preparing ourselves. "Soon rapture will be over, the black windstorm recover. None can think that he can pray; pray his grace to aid and stay. His fear will all envelope, and your feeling develop. It's near that day will come. Prepare, prepare yourself to meet your God, change your ways. Watch and pray, when he comes asking, and the angels sing, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah. Your glorious path endeavors can hold you worthy never. Not can stand during good steps if by spirit you're not land. By His will you be holy, in spirit, soul, and body. Be kept by Him until He comes. Prepare yourself to meet your God, change your ways. Watch and pray, when he comes asking, and the angels sing, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah. Light don't fill in tarty; are you with garments spotless? Such elect to him will fly in the twinkling of an eye. That God may issue thee, not come upon you sinfully. Watch your ear, lest the dark he come. Prepare yourself to meet your God, change your ways. Watch and pray, when he comes asking, and the angels sing, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah. Your cross may seem too heavy, your grips too stern and ready. Oh, in whom can I confide, oh, there's none to take my side. Pray not that Jesus loves you, all things are of him His fruit. Cheer up, put off your gloom, he's come. Prepare yourself to meet your God, change your ways. Watch and pray, when he comes asking, and the angels sing, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah. That Jesus soon is coming, it's just a fancy thinking. Stop the saying that will arise, and your sin for God is fine. The almighty now is nearer than when you met your Savior. His action now will come in style. Prepare yourself to meet your God, change your ways. Watch and pray, when he comes asking, and the angels sing, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, be ready to say, "Lord Jesus, come, hallelujah." Let us all sing the Bible for us. We'll sing in English, Hindi, Telugu and lastly in Konkani. English, Hindi, Telugu and lastly in Konkani. Wherever you are, just take your Bible and declare that this is God's Word. "The best book to read is the Bible. The best book to read is the Bible. If you read it every day, it will help you all the way. O, the best book to read is the Bible. Dunyaame sabse pyare pustak bhaibal. Dunyaame sabse pyare pustak bhaibal. Padukke usko roj bharo, raame katra koy na ho. O dunyaame sabse pyare pustak bhaibal. Patim pasvesta gran namu bhaibal. Patim pasvesta gran namu bhaibal. Agnana patimki nam prematura nadpanu. O patim pasvesta gran namu bhaibal. Uvi pustak tevache utta. Uvi pustak tevache utta. Vasasani para tumi kar tele tum chavoryak. Koy uvi pustak tevache utta." Let's all prepare ourselves to hear God's Word. And we welcome brother Satyraj, our servant, Bangalore, who will share God's Word to us this evening. Yes, and Sevadhar, our Soplam, Amantran Dita. Dunyaam Jesus ke paasarein busshon tajataara aikon. And I'm Shamoja Aaj, Jata Sakur Bao Satyraj, and Lord Sam, Jata Sandesh, Amantran Dita. Yes, welcome brother.
Praise the Lord, Jai Vasee Ki.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord.
So I'm bringing greetings to you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ from Mispa House of Worship Bangalore.
And I am, dunyaam Jesus ke navan, Soplam Purvi Atta, Mispa Sudhir Dasi Lila Bhoktan ke navan, Jesus ke navan.
Thank you. Praise God. God has given us this opportunity to come around God's Word and to hear His voice.
And Devakar Galita, Jatse Paasarein Busshon, Tajse Utra Samata Ekshargion, Tajse Tarva Aikon, Ti Baag Jana Amtra Pauken Lya Pasor.
This evening for our Bible study meditation, let us turn our Bibles to Ephesians, chapter 1.
And I am Sanche Vada, Jatse Utar Sinthong Gertam Ailaan, To Ugunya Jatse Utar Bible Epheska Raj Chitien Koyla Avesor.
Ephesians, chapter 1, verses from 9 to 14, let us read alternately please.
And Epheska Raj Chitien Koyla Avesor, and no vivaal pi chodhaa or kuryan, ami ekam ekam fatlan, vatsuyan.
Wherever you are, kindly sit with your Bibles and also read your portion, wherever you are loudly and with understandably and prayerfully, please.
Koi soraitu aso, Jat Poit Pustak Ugunon, Tu Jutra Vat, Anavastana Shetit Door, Deva Aplia Utran Kita Savansaktada Chive.
Ephesians, chapter 1, reading from verse 9.
Epheska Raj Chitien Koyla Avesor, and no vivaal tan ami shuru kota.
Having made known unto us the mystery of His will according to His good pleasure, which He had purposed in Himself.
Dunyaam ke, kal bottos, sorgar, ani prithumir, asta kitne ikris, uraracha atakal, efta ni kuchcha mon, devachi uzon.
In whom also we have obtained an inheritance, being predestinated according to the purpose of Him, who worketh all things after the counsel of His own will.
Devak, moim adilcha katir, kris yulcha adi, ami tache bawat devteliporza jaucha, tane amcha visun kadiya.
Reading verse 13, in whom He also trusted, after that He heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation, in whom also, after He believed, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise.
So Deva, ami daizhi mon, and I aplia moime, tus melcha, devan aplia kasha poje, te shutka keli mon, dos poit apmo, isaro devanachha.
Second portion from Matthew's Gospel, chapter 18, chapter 16.
And I, dhruti baag, ami ugunya Mathias shogataman.
Matthew's Gospel, chapter 16, verse 18, let us read all together.
And I, Mathias, saora avesor, and I, utra vivaal shogli efta matrya. Mathias, saora avesor, utra vivaal shogli efta matrya.
And I also, therefore Peter, and upon this rock, I will build my church.
And I, bawat, and I, pana chedharvate atike, joyis rechana.
Let us pray.
And I, magri haruya.
Most gracious, loving Heavenly Father, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we bow down before your holy presence with thanksgiving and adoration. Thank you, Lord, every opportunity you are giving us to come into your presence and to hear your voice. Loving Father, even today, you have given us this precious time to sit at your presence, wherever we are, because of this lockdown time. Loving Father, you are, you are the God who can speak. Loving Father, we want to hear you. And if you speak, there is justification for us. That is why, Lord, we beseech your voice and also, Lord, your ways. Loving Father, keep us under the anction of Thy Spirit. Loving Father, once again, we are bringing ourselves by faith under the sprinkling of Thy precious blood. Loving Father, and cleanse us. Once again, I am confessing my utter unworthiness to stand before you and also to stand before thy people. Loving Father, cleanse me, hide me behind thy cross. And Lord, use me for your glory. In your name, we both are standing. Loving Father, satisfy us through thy heavenly manna. Once again, seeking thy help, we ask this prayer with thanksgiving in Jesus Christ. Precious name, we pray. Amen. May the Lord bless the scripture portion which we have just now read.
Atas vaslalna devan, utarachay devan, aplo acharvach galon.
Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 9 to 14, we can say one important word.
Epheska Raj Chitien Koyla Avesor, no ten choda, ami vaslan tason, ek mukki utar amcha purieta.
It is coming repeatedly, the purpose of Him, the purpose of God.
And I, thi devanasamulya devachi sashne kiyuzon.
Apostle Paul in Ephesians' letter is describing the riches we have in Jesus Christ.
And I, Paulo, Epheska Raj Burile Chitien, dakhodutta, ami kitne molaadek, ami kitne molaadekhus kodiya, amcha jeliapto.
Here in first chapter, verses from 9 to 14, Paul is repeating one important word, the purpose of God.
And I, atun vaslanasanthon, no vich choda orein, ek khiri utar vaputta, pez galon, anta mulyar, devachi sashne kiyuzon.
We should understand the God's eternal purpose.
And I, zara zara, devachi sashne kiyuzon kiti di.
God's eternal purpose is the church of the living God.
And devachi sashne kiyuzon jaucha, ta ji soba.
The same purpose of God, God revealed through Apostle Paul. We can find that in Ephesians, chapter 3.
And I, obgut shobeho is, devan, the Paulo, udeshi, Epheska Avesoran, utta purunda, kyla.
Mentioning of this eternal purpose of God, we can find out in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 16, verse 18, with the mouth of Lord Jesus Christ.
And I, ye devachi sashne kiyuzon ihoir, ami Mathias, saora vail, sharan, utra vivaal, ami, misuri amcha nevta.
And I say also unto thee, that thou art Peter, upon this rock I will build my church, and the gates of hell shall not prevail against him.
And I, pisso jesu munta, tu ya khoro, par ya khorpa chere, ami mujhe soba bantha, and shetanase darvate, tache, jyoti honav chana.
God, in His eternal plan, He loved us and He planned for our salvation.
Devan, aplia sashne kiyuzon udeshi, tane vat tayaar keli, amchi shutka, ami shodon koron.
There are three important doctrinal words. It will come in the Bible very frequently.
And I, tein mukki, dhotonichyo, shetoni chiu traka, ti epohit pustakal, gude gude mevta.
First is the salvation.
Koyla mulya taron.
God the Father, He loved us and sent His only begotten Son to die for us on the cross of Calvary in order to give us the forgiveness of sins, remission and redemption from our sinful condition and gives us so great salvation.
Deva pan, amcha, mo kela, and deva udeshi, tane, aplia putar, Jesus Christa, chesancharan daron, tacha pucha monavudeshi, tane vat utti keli, amcha, sashna chen jivit diu.
Matthew's, chapter 16, verse 4, the Lord Jesus Christ is mentioning of the sign of Jonah.
And I, Mathias, saora avesoran, chote orein, jesu, jona chil, gochanga.
And there shall no sign be given unto it, but the sign of the prophet Jonahs, and he left them and departed.
And I, tumka, ami kusli, nishani, awdi chona, pun, nishani mulya, jona ki, anta shudda, pasor, gela.
The Lord Jesus Christ is pointing them to the cross.
Dunyaam jesu, tamcha, kursa sa, vela dar marung, raita.
The Lord Jesus Christ died for us on the cross of Calvary.
Dunyaam jesu kris, amcha pasat, kalvari, kursa kermelo.
He who knows sin and He made us sin for us.
So patok mulya nokos, taka devan, amcha pasat, patok kela.
He made sin for us.
Taka, amcha pasat, patok kela.
He has taken all our punishment upon Himself.
Tane, sogle, amcha, ilchas likha, karen chena, piti, piti.
Lord of God, the Bible says, there is no difference, for all have sinned and come short of the glory of God.
Deva chayutas, sangta, chais, otor na, sogle, paski jalat, and I, taka, devachi, onot porit, darsyon, antar la mu.
Before we attained salvation, we were in that list.
And I, amcha, taron, mevcha adi, and I, te vati naslayo, garukan, sashna, empana, ngiche vati.
Who man of God, Apostle Paul is telling him, chiefest among sinners.
And I, o, bairvat apostle, munta, ki, bakkyam, varya, amukki mu.
But the Lord Jesus Christ, by His grace, through the precious blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, He cleansed us and made us holy, righteous before God and brought us into the purpose of God.
And I, dunyaam jesu, tacha, kursa, kalvari, kursa kewaora udeshi, amchi shutka, shodon koron, tene, shutka, kada, dam, farikon, amcha, likhtu geon, amcha, sashna, apnaili, linkede.
Invitation for salvation given to all.
Ye tarona chay, amopron, sogle, kus dilya cha.
The Lord Jesus Christ himself told, "Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laden, and I will give you rest."
Dunyaam jesu, unkut mulya, sogle, tu nikhusku nasa, od, bargunasa, mujhe, shriya, aanao, tumka, samaran, kothala.
This is the gospel of Lord Jesus Christ. Christ died for us and according to the scriptures said that He was buried and that He was rose again on the third day according to the scriptures.
And I, shu, ottamanta, was, hori kabati, ki, jesu kris, amcha pasat, pasat, mela, taka, nikhi pilo, and I, jatse, utra, pormanati, kris, sakta, punno, joon, dalo.
Whoseever believeth in Him shall not perish but have everlasting life.
Jo, kwan, tache, riswa, duta, taka, na, sava, kola, tumka, ka, sashna chen jivit, kantale.
So the Lord Jesus Christ is ready to give this salvation to everybody.
And I, dunyaam jesu, Krista, and I, sogle, chay tarona pasat, ye, war, kela, and I, sogle, kus, chane, tae, amotran, dila.
This evening, if you are not recipient of this so great salvation, the Lord Jesus Christ is lovingly inviting you.
Ye Sanche Vada, jurtuka, azuntwe, ye taron, jodhuna, o, tuje, tarona chituka, katri na. Dunyaam jesu kris, moga, ye Sanche Vada, tumka, amotran dita, yo, mulya, aplia chere, aavuka, taron dita.
Lord of God, the Bible says, how shall we escape if neglect this so great salvation?
Deva chayutas, sangta, koshia, amita ka, gura, kutta, na, juttori, o, tarona chani, deporva, keli, dala.
Lord Jesus Christ already etoned for the wages of sin's death.
Dunyaam jesu, unkut mulya, ki, paskanche, farikon, moron, davaasa.
So in order to redeem us from this terrible condition and we should believe on the Lord Jesus Christ.
So, amcha, ye, dinakon, nishantana, aplia vato, and I, amcha, sashna chen jivit diu, dunyaam jesu, unapla, jute, kursa kerdilo.
The Lord Jesus Christ completely, He offered Himself for you and for me.
And dunyaam jesu, unapla, kuj, sompoon, tuje pasat, and mujhe pasat, betonila.
He has taken our death upon Himself and He conquered the death and He rose again on the third day.
Ye, monna chay, seltan, jamchet, poldale, aaple, kete, tane, aplia chere geon, paska chay, monna chay, tane, jyoti, dala.
Whoseever believes in Him and the Lord wants to bring them into death to life.
And I, forin, tache, riswa, jorit, taka, jesu, monna, stang, jivitang, atta.
That life is eternal life. There is no end for that.
And I, ye jivit, sashna chay, taka, shu, utna, taka, or, sana chay, sashna.
Today, if you want this so great salvation, come to the Lord Jesus Christ. Look at the cross where the Lord Jesus Christ died for you.
Moga chano, juttu, tuje, taron, zamna, dala, yeraar, bawat, tan, jesu, sa, nyo, te, kalvari, kursa, kere, nor, nor, nor.
Then you will get the forgiveness of sins, repent for your sins. Our Lord Jesus Christ is faithful and just, he will forgive us from all our unrighteousness. Soon after, we get saved, the Lord is not leaving us alone. God is bringing us into the, into his eternal plan. As apostle Paul mentioned in Ephesians chapter one verse nine to seven, nine to fourteen, the Lord is bringing us into this experience and he is bringing us into his eternal plan. That plan is nothing but the church of the living God. The same apostle of Ephesians chapter one, in verse twenty-two and twenty-three, we can read. Ephesians chapter one, verse twenty-two and twenty-three in English. He has put all things under his feet and gave him to be the head over all things to the church, which is his body, the fullness of him that fills it all in all. Lord has brought us into his body. This church is nothing but the body of the Lord Jesus Christ. This vision of the Lord was, it is mysterious. But this mystery of the eternal plan of God, that is the church, is revealing through his son, Lord Jesus Christ. Even apostle Paul, he do not know this before his conversion. Oh, he is well versed in the scriptures, in the law, but he do not know this eternal plan of God. Next chapter nine, we can see the conversion of Paul. Verses four, and he fell to the earth and he heard a voice saying unto him, Saul, Saul, why persecutest me, persecutest thou me? And he said, who art thou, Lord? And the Lord said, I am Jesus whom thou persecutest. It is hard for thee to kick against the bricks, verse four and five. Paul is after the converted believers and he is persecuting them. In verse four, he heard a voice. It is very strange voice he heard. It says, Saul, Saul, why persecutest thou me? We know he recognized it is the voice of God, nothing apart from that. But he could not able to understand this plan, this mystery of God. He is thinking that he is persecuting people. But the Lord himself is telling here, Saul, Saul, why persecutest thou me? The same verse is repeated in verse five, I am Jesus whom thou persecutest. It is hard for thee to kick against the bricks. So the Lord Jesus Christ is, is telling that I am Jesus whom thou persecutest. Saul is persecuting the believers. But the Lord is telling here, you are persecuting me. That means the people who believed on him, those who are saved and that those who have come to the eternal plan of God, they are in Christ. The same truth, apostle Paul later, he explained in second Corinthians, chapter five, verse seventeen. Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is emphasizing this word, that those who are in Christ. We can see the reality of Ephesians chapter one, verse twenty-three, that church is the body of Christ. So the Lord Jesus Christ is telling in Matthew's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse eighteen, building the church. Here the Lord is telling, upon this rock. It speaks of the foundation of the church. Foundation of the church is the Lord Jesus Christ himself. Unless you believe upon the finished work of the cross of Calvary, one cannot be brought upon the foundation. The Lord is building his church. But that, there is a foundation. That foundation is the finished work on the cross of Calvary. That foundation is very strong. If you believe today and you bring upon the foundation. You already seen about the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ. Not by birth in Christian family. But believing on the finished work on the cross and also by repenting for our sins with sincere heart. Here, Christian life will start. At the foot of the cross. And they will be established in that faith. Upon this rock, I will build my church, the Lord is telling. Little fragment, we can see, I will build. It speaks of the builder of the church is nothing but the Lord Jesus Christ. He himself is building, not any man. So the Lord, building his church. Little fragment, we can see, the Lord is telling, upon this rock, I will build my church. The word my church is representing or speaking of the ownership of the church. We cannot give any man's name to the church of the living God. The Lord himself is building. So that's why the Lord is giving us gates of hell, the promise, gates of hell shall not prevail against it. It speaks of the power in the church of the living God. This is the power of God. The church of the living God is the eternal purpose of God. We all know in the Bible, in the world testament. In the world testament, God is part in the tabernacle, God is not a part in the tabernacle. God is a part in the tabernacle. But he revealed himself completely through the tabernacle. So also in new testament church, if we can see. Christ is the head of the church, he is building. Ephesians one twenty-two, Christ is the head of the church. Those who are redeemed by the precious blood of Lord Jesus Christ, they are the body. Here in new testament, we can see the Lord Jesus Christ himself, he is telling, he is the head of the body, the church of the living God. So without body, head will not be revealed. And also without head, the body don't have value. To tabernacle and also for the temple, God has given his pattern. You can see the pattern of the tabernacle God has given to Moses and also the plan of the temple Jerusalem, God has filled with his wisdom to Solomon, in Solomon. But in new testament, our new testament church, the Lord has given us the work. Everything, plan and everything is with the Lord Jesus Christ. There is a work has been given to us in Acts chapter two, verse forty-two. Apostles doctoring, fellowship, breaking a bread and prayer. Early believers, they were stood steadfastly in these four important things. The Lord is building his church according to his plan and purpose. One thing we have to do that we should yield ourselves to the eternal plan of God. We should yield ourselves to the work of the Holy Spirit. He kept us under the appointment of the Holy Spirit. That's what we can find in first Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse eleven. First Corinthians, chapter eleven, uh, chapter twelve and verse eleven. But all this worketh that one under the self same spirit dividing to every man and severally as, as he will. That is why we should yield ourselves to the Holy Spirit of God. All will not do one work, all will not do one work. But everybody, with the wisdom of God and he has given us our talents according to the will of the Holy Spirit. All these talents has been given to us for the edification of the church, the body of Christ. One important question, why the Lord kept this church in this world? Those who are born again, they are calling themselves as we are in the church of the living God, they should understand the mission of the church. I want to turn your attention to the scripture portions, what are the mission, what is the I want to turn your attention to the scripture portions, what are the mission, what is the mission the Lord has given to the church? First important thing is, church is a weapon of God to destroy the satanic kingdom in this world. Constructing the kingdom of God through preaching of the gospel. We can find that commission, Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-eight. Way to the whole world and preach the gospel. This is the work which God has given to the church. God has called us to be witness unto him. If you are controlled by the spirit of God, you will not keep quiet, you will going on witnessing about the Lord Jesus Christ, whatever situations. What a great example we can see in the life of apostle Paul. Acts chapter twenty, verse twenty-four. We all know this verse. We all know this verse. Even otherwise, let us read once again. Acts twenty and verse twenty-four. Things to me, neither count I my, my life dear unto myself, so that I might finish my course with joy, the ministry which I have received of the Lord, Jesus to testify the gospel of the grace of God. Here in this small testimony, Apostle Paul is mentioning three important things. Here Paul is telling, my life. In God's grace, we are also living in this world. Our life is a gift of God, we all know. But we should apply the spiritual principle for our life. Lord Jesus Christ himself, he told. Those who want to keep their life, they will lose. Those who want to give their life and they will gain it for eternity. Anybody wants to follow me, he should deny himself, take up the cross and follow me. That is why Apostle Paul came to a right decision in his life. Why did I count my life dear unto myself? These days, many of us are counting our life dear unto ourselves. There is no doubt, there is an opposition from the world, persecution from the world. But we should take the decision of Apostle Paul for our life. Second thing we can see, Apostle Paul understood that the Lord has kept a course before him. So this course, speaking about the running race. So we should be runners for the sake of the Lord. One day, we will finish this course. Whoever finishes this course successfully, they will be rewarded by the Lord. So in that, while we are running this course, we should do the ministry also, Paul is mentioning here, my ministry. And the ministry which I have received of the Lord. Paul is very clearly mentioning, I have received of the Lord Jesus to testify the gospel of the grace of God. Whatever circumstances may be, we should not forget to preach the gospel of the grace of God. We should take all our opportunities and we should be ready to preach the gospel to the unsaved world. We should have that goal like Apostle Paul. I am telling it all personally, why? Because we are in the church of the living God. But this ministry should go on through the church of God. Who after born again, the Lord is adding us into the church of God. We are not independent. We are in the body of Christ. And we should do our ministry through the church of God. That's why the Lord is telling about the power in the churches, the gates of hell shall not prevail against the church. This is the power of God. Gospel is the power of God, first Corinthians, chapter one, verse eighteen. First Corinthians, chapter one, verse eighteen. For the preaching of the cross is to them that perish foolishness, but unto us which are saved, it is the power of God. This is the first and important mission the Lord has given to the church to preach the gospel of Lord Jesus Christ for the extinction of his kingdom. Second important mission we can find in Matthew's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse eighteen and nineteen, the same verse which we read. The gates, destroy the gates of hell. To destroy the gates of hell through the prayer of the church. In order to destroy the gates of hell, a church should be a prayerful church. As we are part in the body of Christ and we should learn to become prayerful people. All these days we were so much busy. But the Lord has locked us in our houses and we wants to, uh, understand our important thing of prayerful life. Ministry of prayer is more important to the church. All time believers they know and they used to tell us that anybody not found in the church prayer, ministry will not be given to them. If yours and my ministry wants to be a powerful ministry, that should be dipped in the prayer. We should not neglect the prayer life. Personal prayer or family prayer or very importantly, such prayer we should not neglect. Through this power of the prayer of the church, God wants to destroy the gates of hell. One important mission, we can find out in second Timothy, chapter two. Second Timothy, chapter two. Verses one and two. This is the third important mission which the Lord has given to the church. Yes, brother, read, brother. Second Timothy, second chapter one and two. Especially in verse two, we can see, and the things that thou hast heard of me among many witnesses, the same commit thou to faithful men, who shall be able to teach others also. So here, the Lord has given the responsibility or the mission to the church is to guard the truth of God. Word of God should be pure. It's not, it should not be altered. It should not be adulter- altered or adding and removing should not be there. So doing ministry in the church of God is important at the same time, we should invite the healthy word into the church. Now there are many wrong doctrines have entered. We should design, what is the truth and what is not truth. Many were received through these wrong doctrines. So that is why we should be very careful to guarding the truth of God. It is very subtle to take us away from the doctrine of God. Many people, we want to please people, that's why we will give message to many people. Even if they tell wrong also and he will learn like that, we will leave them. But anything wrongly preached and it should be corrected. Recently, I want to invite some foreigner in the Zoom and to give word to my church, local church. Before that, I called the senior servant of God. Before I invited him, I called and asked to senior servant of God. One question he asked me, do you know that person? Which fellowship we belong to? Will he tell good word, healthy word? Or any confusion he is going to bring? So immediately it came to my mind. So I should first test him. Oh, he may be wildly used, but we should know whether he is holding the good doctrine or not. So the Lord has given us the commission to guard the truth of God. Fourth important mission, we can find out in Ephesians, chapter four. Let us read that verse Ephesians, chapter four, verses from eleven to fifteen. Please read, brother. Please read, brother. So, all these talents have been given for the edification of the body of Christ. In verse twelve, we can see. So, fourth important mission the Lord has given to the church is to edify saints. Through the ministry of the church, saints should be edified. Now I want to put a question for myself, whether my existence in the body of Christ, is it giving edification to the saints or not? Many times, we will hurt people. If we point out somebody, they will say, we know about this person. There is no edification because of him in the church, they will say. There is no edification because of him in the church, they will say. If I am in the body of Christ and I should be, I should give edification to the fellow members of the body of Christ. I should show Christ through my life. If anybody looking at me, they should see the qualities and character of Lord Jesus Christ. If we go further, fifthly, fifth commission which the Lord has given to the church is second Corinthians, chapter thirteen, verse one to ten, we can see. To discipline the unruly people. The Lord himself told in eighteenth chapter of Matthew's Gospel. So anybody has done mistake and he should brought, he should be admonished first initially by single person. Later on, if he won't listen, then we have to take two or three people. Repeated correction and then the Lord is telling, go and tell it in the church. So we should understand there is a discipline of unruly is, should be there in the church of God. So, living in sin and some people, they will be allowed in the ministry. Who will give account to God? Lord kept discipline in the church. So that he wants to perfect his church and present them as holy people before the Lord. So one should understand those who are born again and brought into the body of Christ. And this fivefold commission, we should understand. First is the church is the weapon of God to destroy the satanic kingdom by preaching of the gospel. And secondly, to destroy the gates of hell through the prayer of the church. Third commission to guard the truth of God. That should be pure word of God. Fourthly, edifying the church, edifying the saints. Why church is there? To get spiritual edification. And fifthly importantly, that unruly, unruly should be disciplined in the church. As I was a young believer, I used to see in those days, if anybody fallen in sin and though he was a great preacher or eloquent creature, if he repented, he should come on the stage and ask forgiveness publicly. What is the discipline of the church? But these things very rarely nowadays we are, we can see. So they will go to some person and they will ask forgiveness and they will, then I said, I said right everything, then they will use him. That is not the way. And come on the stage, ask forgiveness. So this is the commission which the Lord has given to the church. This mission should be fulfilled by the church, the living God, the body of Christ. For everything, there is a purpose. Even for you and for me, there is a purpose of God. We all know Isaiah forty-three, verse seven says, the purpose of creating man is to bring glory to God. We should bring glory to God. Whatever you do, we should bring glory to God. So that's why purpose of God also is there about the church in the Bible. The first important thing is to reveal the fullness of God and the glory of God through the church. Ephesians one twenty-two, twenty-three again. If you can read, you can understand the fullness of God and the glory of God. So fullness of God bodily, dwelling in Christ. So Apostle Paul understood. Lord is having a body. The work of the body should be seen in the church. It's not one man's soul. They are in the body of Christ. And there should be function of the body should be visible. One great servant of God and he told his testimony. He went to a funeral before his conversion and he is, before he came into the, into the fellowship of God's people and he went to a funeral to attend, to attend a funeral event. Many people gathered in the burial ground. Youverable people are there. Then he asked his friend. Yes, sir. Is all these people are relatives to you? Then he told, these are the church and who are in the body of Christ, he told. One more occasion came for him to attend a wedding of his friend's family. One more occasion, he went to attend a wedding. In that wedding also, many, many were gathered there. Second question, again he asked the question, are, all these people are your relatives? They play is, they are the people of God. The Lord has brought us into the large family. To the body of Christ. There are many members in the body of Christ. So body should work. Then there only we can see the glory of God. First purpose of God, we can see in Ephesians, chapter one twenty-two, twenty-three. God wants to reveal his fullness and glory through the church. We are united with Christ after born again. Such people gathering together is the church of God. You and I are united with Christ and Christ's life should be seen from, in us. Secondly, his love should be seen in us. Only his light should be seen in us. Fourthly, liberty, which we are enjoying, it should be seen in us. First for the life of Christ. God wants to reveal his fullness through the church. First important thing is, he wants to reveal his life through the church. First John, chapter five. First John, chapter five. Verse eleven and twelve. Verse twelve, he that hath son hath life and he that hath not the son, son of God hath not life. John's Gospel, chapter ten, verse ten says, the Lord came to this world to give life. Not only life, the life abundant he wanted to give. There's the purpose why the Lord Jesus Christ came to this world. So his life should be flow in us. And Ephesians, chapter two, verse one. His love should be revived by the Holy Spirit in us. So Christ's life should be seen in the church. If we die for ourselves, then only Christ will be seen from us. That means, we, the members in the body of Christ, always we should give preambience to Christ. Apostle Paul is telling in Philippians, chapter one, for me to live is for Christ. Galatians, chapter two, verse twenty, the life which is living in the flesh, it is not for him, it is, the Lord only lives in him, is telling. Christ should be exalted in our church life. Some of the people, they will put a board, they saw only Jesus, they saw only Jesus. So our local church principals, principals also should be like that. Christ should be seen and his authority should be seen in the church. Secondly, fullness of God includes the love of Christ. Oh, Christ's life, Christ's love is not selfish. So, that same love has been shut abroad in our hearts through the blessed Holy Spirit. So our love should be pure love. That is why in Revelation chapter 2, to the Ephesians church, the Lord is giving warning, you lost your first love. What is the meaning of first love? First love is nothing but the original love we should have brought in our hearts through the blessed Holy Spirit. The Lord's love is agape love. Always it will sacrifice. It will give. So in our church, this type of love should be exhibited. As the member of the body of Christ, personally I have to take and I have to ask the Lord, Lord fill me with the original love. Many times we correct people. And we also should learn to love people. Correction also should be with love. What a great love we enjoyed from the Lord Jesus Christ in Romans 5:5. And also His, the fullness of God includes the light of the Lord Jesus Christ. First John chapter 1 is telling about the light. And we should walk in the light. Then only we have communion with God. Light reveals the sin. That means correct discernment we should have. We should say which is correct is correct, which is not correct is wrong. Such sort of discerning should be there in the church. Lord will not call darkness as light and darkness as light. Spiritual discerning is more important in the church. Fullness of God includes the light of God. Fourth importantly, liberty also. So many times we are again going into the bondage. Though Lazar came into life, but he is bonded by the grave clothes. Those things should be removed. Many times we live in anger. Heavy and jealousy. And could not die, growth. And heart of revenge. So all these things and will not fulfill the will of God. The Lord has liberated us. And we should be, live as a free people, freed people by the Lord Jesus Christ. Do not have compromise with the world. And we should live a holy life wherever we are. Wherever you are, alone or in another place, wherever you are and you should live in the liberty which God has given us. You see in the life of Lord Jesus Christ. As you and I exposing, exposed, as you and I, He also exposed to the world. But word of God says, there is no sin in Him. That is the true liberty. You should live faithful to the Lord. And this is the purpose of God. First purpose of God is, we can find, we have seen in Ephesians chapter 1, 22 and 23. To reveal the fullness of God and the glory of God through the church. Secondly. Second purpose of the Lord, we can see in Acts chapter 11 verse 23. Acts 20, Acts 11:23. Let us read this verse. 11:23, yes brother. In English 23, who, when he came and had seen the grace of God. When Barnabas went to see the church at Antioch. Here Barnabas saw one important thing. Here Barnabas saw one important thing. Acts chapter 11:23 in English, who when he came and he had seen the grace of God. God wants to reveal the grace of God through the church. We all know we saved by the grace of God. Ephesians chapter 2, verse 8 and 9 says. By the grace of God, the Lord saved us. As the people of God, those who obtained the grace of God, coming together in a place as a body of Christ and that grace of God should be seen. What is the meaning of grace? For which we are not eligible, the Lord has made us eligible. Always, heart of gratitude towards God should be there. When Barnabas came to Antioch church, he saw the grace of God, that means humbleness, humbleness there. What a beautiful character of church it is. If our local church, wherever, where, where we are gathering, if grace of God seen there and there won't be any fighting. So all will be humble. With the mind of Christ. Bearing one another, forbearing one another. And extreme one another, extremeing one another. So this is the, this is the purpose of God about the church, God wants to reveal His grace through the church. And thirdly, if you want to see in Ephesians chapter 4 verse 1. Talking about the unity in the church of God. Ephesians chapter 4. And verse 1 and 2. And verse 3. So unity, the Lord wants to reveal the unity of Christ, unity in the church, through the church. Having triune God. So in God, there is a unity. Same unity should be seen and should be revealed through the church of God. Psalm 133 verse 1, we all know this verse. Psalm 133 verse 1. Bold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. So we should keep the unity. I should not have dual mind. Or my own selfish, I should not cling on to my own selfish thought. There should be, perfect unity should be revealed through the church, that is the purpose of God. This unity is not depending on our background's language and also the place, this unity should be depend on the purely word of God. Many times we will, we are not clinging on to this unity, divine unity. Many times we are divided through language. Through the place. So through the cost sometimes, cost. We are all same in the body of Christ. There is a beautiful unity in the body of Christ. This unity should be revealed through the church. That is the purpose of God. Fourthly, Ephesians chapter 3, verse 8 to 11 if you can read. Ephesians chapter 3, verses from 8 to 11. Then we can see the Lord wants to reveal the manifold wisdom of God through the church. So God's wisdom should be seen. Wisdom of God is so great. Many times if we, we are, we are comparing with the wisdom of man. Wisdom of God is so great. Even His thoughts are higher than my thoughts. The Lord's ways are higher than my ways. Same sort of wisdom God want, God wants to reveal is manifold wisdom of God. We cannot fix, apostle is having, I am having that talent like that, we cannot fix. Manifold wisdom only it will be revealed through the body of Christ, through the church of, church of God. Somebody is coming and singing here, church should have peace. Church should have peace. And they should accept. This is the person having this talent. I cannot project myself that I am having this talent and that talent. Our duty should come into the house of God and sit. Manifold wisdom of God, towards you, it will be revealed through the church. So we should depend on God's wisdom. These are the four important purposes why God kept this church in this world. First is to reveal His fullness and glory through the church.
ताके ओड़कन ताके भुरपुराई ताके थर्कन सोबे अवधि के दापो पुरो
It includes his life, his love and his light and also his liberty.
अनि ते वर्तता तासो मोग तासो उजवार अनि ताकि स्वतंत्राय कि आम का मेरा दिस्ती निंदाय
Secondly, God wants to reveal the grace of God through the church.
दूसरा मुंडा यवा के योजना कि ताके कुर्पे चे ओढो दियो सोबे अवधि
Thirdly, unity he wants to reveal through the church.
अनि तीसरा मुंडा एक ओर एक सार कोण ये सोबे अवधि के तो दापो पुरों सोता
And fourthly, manifold wisdom of God he wants to reveal through the church.
ते मुंडा यवा के भुरपुराई जानवाय
May the Lord help, so, may the Lord help us to understand these spiritual principles.
देवान आम का आदा दियो ये अत्मिक नेम ये समझन गेव
May the Lord bring us into his eternal plan.
देवान आम का अप्ले सास्ना के योजना नारु
He may be faithful for which the Lord has called us.
तो विश्वास के या पड़न अंतर आम का पोइला आस्ते पुरे पुरो
If you are not born again, not added to the church of God, the Lord is giving you invitation, one more opportunity. Repent for your sins, look at the cross, at the foot of the cross, repent for your sins and believe the death, burial and resurrection of Lord Jesus Christ and you will be saved.
जुत्तो तुझे ये वरा पश्चात अंग जाना गजा तो ये वरा जिजु तुका मोत्रण दिता यो मुं कुर्सा सोये तारे खालुआरी कुर्फार के ले वावरा चे स्वपुन भावटो आपुण पात के मुं ओड़कन गेव मुं बुदो ताकि विश्वास दुरु ताका कुजो अप्लाय लको अनि अन्ना सुकाय सास्ना के जीवित ले ले
May the Lord help you to be recipient of this so great salvation.
देवान तुका एक एक एकला आदा दियो तू जाऊं ये कुर्पे चे ओनोबा गैसलाला वांग्री
May the Lord bless this word.
देवान एवत्रा चे आश्रवात गालो Great brother.
Gracious loving heavenly Father, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we bow down before your holy presence, honoring your name, exalting your name. Thank you Lord for thy word which thou hast revealed this evening. Loving Father, remind, reminded us about the eternal purpose of God. Loving Father, we were wretched sinners once upon a time. Thank you, the grace given to us by the salvation. You have brought us into the eternal plan of God. We worship thee, we adore thee. Thank you Lord, you added us into the body of Christ for which the Lord Jesus Christ is head of this church. We worship thee, we adore thee. Thank you Lord, you have given us the word to understand the mission of the church, high-fold mission of the church and also four-fold purpose of the church, purposes of the church. We worship thee, we adore thee. Help us Lord to be faithful in thy word. Bless this word.